All right, welcome everyone to tonight's workshop session. Mr. Manager, I'll turn that over to you at this point.
Sir, if we could make sure that Councilmember Dow is on the call, she is virtual today.
Okay, all right, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Good, okay. We've got Brian Brown from the Greenville Housing Fund here this afternoon to share an exciting update with us about affordable housing around Unity Park. So I'll call on Brian if you would. Come on up and share the great story with us this afternoon.
Great, thank you all. So I'm Brian Brown with the Greenville Housing Fund, thank you for having me. Very excited to be here to share a little bit about the progress we're making around Unity Park. I wanted to just take a moment and thank you all, staff, and partners, colleagues, staff, for the condolences I've received. And Greenville is a very special place to live, and it means a lot to me, and I just want to acknowledge that.
You're special too, Brian, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Very special place to live here in Greenville. So anyway, getting back to more pleasant topics, I'm here to share some good news and progress on the work that we are doing to leverage the investment the city has made in Unity Park. So not only has the city of Greenville invested money and resources in creating a world-class new community asset at Unity Park, but the city has also, through its partnership with the Greenville Housing Fund, it's investing fifteen and a half million dollars in affordable housing adjacent to the park to keep and create diverse housing options for everyone who lives, works, worships, plays, and raises a family in Greenville. And I think it's just really important to emphasize the level of investment that we are making here, and I'm having a hard time. Thank you. So this is a map of, you can see Unity Park, it's right at the bottom corner of your screen. We have four sites out of eight that I wanted to sort of provide an update on. Site six, you'll see on the map, is our Southern Side Senior Housing Site One. Site three on the map is our Southern Side Senior Housing Site Two. We are working in that project, we are partnering with Greystone Affordable Development on that, and Southern Side Economic Development, and what I consider to be an innovative partnership and relationship that helps build community capacity to serve residents already living in the neighborhood and to provide social and community services to the seniors who will live there, in addition to providing supports and resources to a local nonprofit. Site seven is the site we refer to as Oscar Apartments right now, because it's at the corner of Oscar, Nassau, and Meadows, and that's a partnership with Jordan Development and Bob Beretto, and you'll hear more about these in a moment. And then Site Five, which is a slightly larger site, is a partnership with Lighthouse Development, and David Mann is here as well, and we're really excited about the density we are achieving around Unity Park and the diversity of housing options and the level of affordability we will be able to achieve. So moving on, I wanted to spend a few moments reviewing each site and the status of the development phase for each site. So as you can see, on Site One of our Affordable Senior Project, we have ninety-three units out of a total of one hundred and forty-seven. When we get to Site Two, you'll see that number in a minute. The target income served here is fifty to sixty percent. This will be an age and income restricted property serving senior citizens who need an affordable place to live. The level of city investment we've programmed for this is a half a million dollars on this site and a half a million dollars on the other site for a total of one. And you'll see that we have mostly one bedrooms and two-bedroom units in this development, and we are looking forward to anticipated construction in 2023. As I go through, you'll see the rendering, so just as a reminder, when we do affordable development, it's like doing any other kind of real estate development, or it's in some ways not too dissimilar from buying your own house. If you're doing new construction like we are, you have to find a site, you have to get legal entitlement to the site, you have to get all of the site you need to do what you're proposing to do, you have to go through environmental review and all of the review and approval and legal entitlement process, and so by the time you get to your financial closing and vertical construction, you're about ninety percent of the work is behind you, the vertical construction is the last piece, and it's almost like redoing a room, like if you're stripping wallpaper and painting, ninety percent of it's prep, the last ten percent's actually putting the new paint on. So I like to explain that to folks, because it's not unusual for these projects to take three to five years to come out of the ground. So we're not behind, we're not ahead, but we're about where we should be on this. These are some renderings of Site One, which will flank and frame the Lila May Brock Plaza, as you can see in this rendering. I think the other thing to point out here is, you know, this is an elevated level of design for affordable housing, and, you know, given where this sits and the proximity to the park and the importance of this area, you know, I think it's only fitting that we have high-quality design, and to me, this looks like any other market-rate product in the community, and that's the way it should look. And that takes extra effort, and it comes with some extra cost. You know, if you're building an apartment, you're building an apartment, you know, affordable's not cheaper than market, it's just the folks that you are serving have less money to spend on their rent or their mortgage, depending on what you're doing, but we shouldn't be able to pick out what's affordable in the community, and I believe that this is a testament to that philosophy, that this is going to be, I think, an honored and valued contributor to this neighborhood for years and years and years to come. So I just wanted to point that out. This is a perspective, you know, from a terrace looking out towards the park, and you can see how the site is laid out. Site Two has a total of fifty-four units, complementing Site One. As you can see on this map, it is down on West Washington where Trescott, at the intersection of Trescott, the post office would be to the east of the site, it's adjacent to Brockwood Senior Housing, and then behind the site is Asbury Avenue, and there are some single-family homes there. And you can see these renderings, we continue to, Rob Couch is here, by the way, the architect with Melon, Pason, Smith, I almost forgot to mention that, thank you, Rob, for being here. And, you know, we continue to work on both the design, materials, things that contribute to the aesthetic of the development, while we are also working very hard to put together the financing to get this under construction. I'm going to ask James Jordan to come up and say a few words about this next project. I want James to share this, since he and his team have been working so hard on this.
Absolutely, thank you, Brian. Good evening. It's certainly an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to have the opportunity to stand before council and staff and talk about this very exciting project. I stand representing our team, Jordan Development, my great friend Bob Beretto, the Greenville Housing Fund staff, who's been extremely, extremely gracious and fun to work with, and then also Raquel Collier on our team as well. This has been some time in the making, and we're very excited for what this project can mean to the park. We have had a chance to, in a moment, we're going to show the renderings, but at first I'd just give the teaser, we've had a chance to meet with some community stakeholders and share the vision for this development with them. It's going to be fifty-two units, thirty-nine of the units are going to be affordable. We want to aim to make sure that we're taking care of the workforce in our community. Part of those units will be at the fifty percent AMI level, I'm very proud to share as well. We're hoping to get some shovels in the ground yet this year. I'll also share that we have banks that are extremely excited about this project, so we're facing some competition for the banks, but we'll figure that out based on who has the best financing package for us. I got the control, look at that. Okay. We spent a lot of time and a lot of conference calls talking about the look and the aesthetic, and we wanted to make sure that this was a product that really complimented the neighborhood and something that also complimented the park and was park-like. So LS3P, John Edwards and team have helped us with this design, and we're very pleased with the way that it's come out so far. This is the front side, and this will be the rear. I see Shannon smiling, I think that's a good thing. Any questions I can answer immediately?
Just want to, I just want to note that it's cheek to jowl, if you will, with the market-rate condos on the other side, and I don't know, see Bob Beretto here, I think those units sold for like eight hundred thousand apiece or something like that. So, you know, you got to look at the Unity Park property as a whole, not just individual pieces, because there's opportunity in Unity Park to do lots of everything, all the above, and in this case, it even includes very expensive condos, but they're right next door to your project, which is a great project.
It is.
Thanks for tying them all together like that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, that's a really good point. I mean, I think with all of our projects, we look at the neighborhood context, and, you know, we've worked with the neighbors adjacent to this and those townhomes, and we tried to come up with the design to complement those townhomes and to create sort of a nice transition as you head in towards the park for the next project that I'm going to share with you. We're not as far along on the renderings, we are working with Johnston Design Group, David Mann, who's here with Lighthouse Development, is our development partner on this, and this sits on a larger parcel on Meadow, right across from the wetlands area of Unity Park, and this will have a little more density, because we're taking advantage of the topography of the site, where it really, it starts up on Oscar and it goes down a fairly steep grade of a hill, and so what you're seeing here is a proposal to have two-hundred-and-fifty-two units, three-hundred-and-sixty, three-hundred-and-fifty parking spots in a two-story podium parking structure onsite that not only will serve this development, but can also serve the needs of the surrounding community, the apartments that James just shared. I know even the townhomes have a lot of parking demand for visitors and not a lot of off-site parking, so we envision this parking serving multiple users. And again, as James pointed out, we are also trying to achieve a good level of diverse housing options, ranging from fifty percent area median income up to median income of a hundred percent with this particular project. These are really massing studies to show you what the massing and the form would look like, but these are not renderings of the actual property, those will be coming, we hope, in a few weeks. So I wanted to just pause there and summarize sort of where we are with these sites that have had this active effort of development and putting these projects together. So as you can see on this chart, you know, our goal around Unity Park with all eight sites is to serve a thousand residents, and with these three projects, you know, we have four-hundred-and-fifty-one homes, which would serve seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine residents, so we're a good way towards our goal. You can see the breakdown on AMI, you can see the investment, seven and a half million dollars on approximately a hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars of total development costs. So not only are we providing a lot of new homes in this area adjacent to the park, we still have additional sites to serve, but we're also achieving significant leverage of scarce community resources, and that's sort of the secret sauce of what we do and how we do it at the Greenville Housing Fund. So getting back to the remaining development and to put this in a little additional context of the Southern Side Neighborhood and the park development, what you're seeing on the left is all of the sites that we will be programming, and Sites One, Two, Eight, and Four, and Two and Eight will become one site, and then One and Four will be separate, so we'll have three different development opportunities moving forward. And the image on the right is an aerial of the neighborhood, including where the park sits today from nineteen-sixty-five, and the reason, you know, we want to honor the legacy and history of this neighborhood, but we also want to honor and recognize the improvements and the new residential opportunities that we are creating in this neighborhood, that you'd really have to go back, you know, fifty-five years to see any similar types of housing in that neighborhood, because a lot of the housing started to be demolished when, like in a lot of communities around the country, there were plans for major highways and interstates coming through, and this area was sort of in the crosshairs of that proposed interstate development. And so to me, you know, we didn't get here by accident, but I also want to take a moment to honor not only the addition of the park, but more particularly for the Greenville Housing Fund. I mean, a thousand units of housing that might serve two thousand people is a significant contribution and addition of diverse housing options for this neighborhood and this area around the park, and I think the city's commitment to resources, to the Greenville Housing Fund to make this possible, you know, are certainly commendable. So I am going to summarize this and then invite Tina. I also just want to take a moment, because, you know, we have a team at the Greenville Housing Fund, and as you can see, we have a lot of partners from our Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition in the room today, and, you know, Greenville Housing Fund can't do what we're doing alone, and nor should we try. We believe in partnerships, we believe in working with our nonprofit sector, our private for-profit sector, many of whom have been recognized, and you've heard from James, and we've recognized some of our other private partners, but we can't do this without them, and I think we're getting the leverage where you're seeing because of the way we're doing it, and it's a deliberate strategy, and I just want to take a moment to recognize that. What this chart is showing is, you know, let's also keep in mind that I've been here a little over three years, and the Greenville Housing Fund has been in existence for four. So this is new work and new effort, but what we're showing here today is the twenty-twenty-two year-to-date total of units, both produced and preserved by the Greenville Housing Fund's efforts, are just under seven hundred units with nine-point-four million dollars, and you'll see how that, this year's total compares to twenty-twenty-one, which was a hundred-and-twenty-six, and then the previous years totaled four-hundred-and-eighty-one. So we are surpassing in one year the cumulative effort that the Greenville Housing Fund has been able to achieve. Now, we did live through a thing that was called COVID, and we had some other community priorities we had to step into, but I think we've got a lot of momentum, we've got a lot of support, we've got a lot of tremendous partners, and there's a lot more we want to do, and I'm going to turn it over to Tina to just say a few words about what we have in mind in addition to the work we've shared with you today on Unity Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. I just want to, before I get started, thank you for your commitment to the Greenville Housing Fund, your staff has been great to work with, and we really are excited about all the developments in Unity Park. I wish I'd known it wasn't a PowerPoint anymore, now it's PDF, because I had all these animations for the big, the big numbers there. So just to make sure we emphasize, it's fifteen and a half million in Unity Park for affordable housing, we really want to make sure that's heard loud and clear, and that our thousand residents brought to Unity Park, new residents, like Brian mentioned, it's been for over fifty years not had very, very high residential housing, and so, and you can see how dense it used to be, and so that's why we're so thankful to work for the city, not only on the plan for the Unity Park, but now carrying out all of this work. So thank you, and I appreciate your commitment. So I just want to go through a few projects that...
If you make the comment, I'm making notes here, that basically, it's been fifty years before there were any houses or people on these lots.
On our sites, those eight sites, yeah.
And I guess, Ms. Fleming, that would correspond, that's about the time of the Loop Project, am I right? About fifty years, so it kind of makes sense.
In the...
The microphone.
Beginning of the seventies, I had to get my numbers right.
Yeah.
In the beginning of the seventies, there was a plan, a plan that was going to take ten or twelve years to build a seven-lane highway, and it would displace eleven-hundred-and-twenty-three homes in my neighborhood. It would go all the way from up near Cedar Lane Road over to, of all things, to Highway eighty-five off Church, where the old Kmart, I mean, that's a long stretch, eleven-hundred-and-twenty-three homes, I mean, that was almost unbelievable. Of course, it did not come to fruition, because the community stuck together, but there were still houses that were torn down. And before that, in the late sixties, the old, what we used to call Little Texas, which was actually where the Balo Center and the Bond Secure Wellness Arena was one of the first African-American homeowner, home-owned communities that was totally wiped out. It's not part of this district, but it was the beginning of what was going on in the late sixties, so there were lots of houses, and our neighborhood has had photographs of what it looked like in the sixties, the seventies, and the early eighties until, you know, until now, lately, so it started quite some time ago with movement, and it was highways that began the process then, now it's just human beings, this moving house. So this is exciting, very exciting, because all the time, people kept complaining, and people are still complaining, because they can't find any place to live, and when you have four thousand or more people on the waiting list for the Housing Authority, and they had it open for one day, one day this year, last year it was open for, was it two weeks or something like that? Now, that's sad to say, because we don't have the supply, and, but in nineteen-eighty-seven or eighty-eight, I can't remember which one of them, we had an abundance of affordable housing, or let's just say substandard housing. To me, if you go to them, they didn't have heaters in them, because they weren't required, which was one of the first things, I think, on City Council that we worked on, was trying to guarantee that everybody was warm, because we had several people to die from freezing to death in their units in the city. to death in their units in the city of Greenville. We changed the stance. We had a lot of arguments from a lot of different other people that came, realtors and stuff, they were all over us about it, but we just didn't feel with all the people dying in the community that they should not have a, a unit, a heating unit in the house. And, you know, it's amazing that you have all this great education, and then when you get to that information, they don't have a heating unit, and then you look at state statute where it doesn't require it, I'm saying, oh, somebody is sick, because everybody else has a heating unit. So, so to me, based upon all that I know, this is a great stand to begin a process. And I really thank all the council members for sticking together and making affordable housing our number one priority. We knew it wouldn't be fast, but at least we wanted to do something and to begin a process. And we're working, a couple of them I want to work on the AMIs, kind of back it up, but you got to have more investment.
That's what I'm happy to cover, yeah.
If we can get, if we can get some more people to invest, we can back up the AMI to some of them, and that would help a lot of the people to qualify for some of them.
You'll see on Church Street Place here, we've got 30% below 60 at Legacy Oaks. The Ivy, these are preservation that we've been able to close on, the 50 to 80.
Oh, yes, it's exciting.
Shamwood is a big deal. It's been a good partnership, Pleasant Valley Community, and that's 30%. And the ones I'm about to show you also go a little bit deeper into that AMI that you're referring to.
Thank you so much.
So the Riley, thank you, Councilwoman, appreciate your comments. The Riley at Overbrook is 88 units, 19% of the, 19 of those units will serve 20% to 50% AMI. I mean, that is pretty unprecedented in the city. So 20 to 60% is the total range of the AMI income. Our investment is at 720,000. We're expecting construction start by the end of 2022. You saw that went through the recent state tax credit.
Right.
Clog up, that happened and has been approved. This is an example rendering. This is not the exact one for the Riley at Overbrook, but this is similar to other projects they have completed, and we will be passing, of course, as soon as we have those along. Gateway at the Green, so it's kind of a mall connector road, 72 units, 14 will serve, again, 20 to 50% AMI. So that's area median income. The whole area median income will be 20 to 60 for the entire project. And again, this one, it was also in that same tax credit pool, and so the end-of-year construction is expected for 2022. This is, is a rendering for this project. So where we are, this is our current project pipeline. If you'll notice, we've got a total of 1439 units, and like Brian said, we've had just over three years and over 1,000 units. With Unity Park added to this, we have 1439, along with other projects. So our current investment is sitting around 21 million, and we don't currently have 21 million in the, in the bank. So we are kind of shifting gears into how do we make some of these a reality? And so a lot of it, we've actually raised, if you'll see on here, an impact fund, we've raised private dollars to match, around 7 million at this point, to match the city of Greenville dollars. And so that's where you'll see a lot of the funding source. And again, you're going to see some, the variations of area median income as well. So the total project cost is 332 million. I mean, that is obviously more than 10 times the amount, so we're doing pretty good in terms of leveraging. And just as a reminder, we have the ultimate goal for 2040 at 2,000 homes over 10 years. So this kind of shifts us into the where we need to go. That's our multifamily pipeline, but we've had a lot of discussions with council members, members of the community. As Brian mentioned, our Affordable Housing Coalition not only is private and public developers, so nonprofits as well, but we also have neighborhood representation, neighborhood leadership. And so we've talked to a lot of our partners about the need for infill homeownership opportunities. We've heard that a lot. Affordable homeownership, you know, that's getting further and harder and harder to do at an AMI level that's not above 80, 100, 120 for some of our partners. And I really want to recognize, you know, we have Homes of Hope, we've got Monroe Free here, other partners in the room that work on affordable homeownership, and want to make sure that they're pointed out. Again, part of this is also financing support for these folks, and then the opportunity to land bank, which is another huge opportunity. If we, of our neighborhoods, our special emphasis neighborhoods in particular, keep losing land, it'll be impossible, obviously, once that happens, to get that back. And so that is a huge part of the strategy that we're talking about tonight, which is called a neighborhood strategy. So we're calling this accelerated investment in affordable housing. Essentially, it's a way that we'd be able to front-load the capital, the 2.5 million that is already allocated on an annual basis to the housing fund, on the front end to address that long-term pipeline. And what that would do is free up our local dollars that we have on hand to do affordable homeownership in more single-family style infill opportunities. So that's what we're going to be breaking down. Really, it's to have an aggressive land banking strategy. We have multiple parts of our city, whether it's Newtown, and I know Pastor Mills is here. We have Green Avenue. There's a lot of city land that is still viable to be land-banked and could be preserved for affordable housing. In terms of the accelerated investment, our current multifamily goal is 2,500 homes. And again, that's a mixed income. That's workforce and affordable together at that 2,500. As I mentioned, 21 million of this is already in development on our pipeline, but we see this as an opportunity where we can also do single-family rental. So for example, Homes of Hope does locale housing, and that's 30% AMI rental in the city. Another part of this is housing stabilization, so how we're able to use this to support those who might be going through step-down programs, transitional housing, getting folks, basically we have a shelter system that's clogged up. So if we can get them to affordable rental, they'll be able to move on out of the shelter because we have folks going to work every day, going, living in a shelter still. So it's kind of part of that solution to unclog. And again, a huge part of this is to leverage private investment upwards of eight times what we're putting in on the public side. And then the last part of this is that neighborhood strategy, like I said. That would allow us to shift our 10 million on hand for a goal of 200 homes, single-family affordable homeownership, mixed-income communities, and also resources for programs. We put together a round table of a lot of our partners, and they asked for more programming resources, pre-develop, pre-development loans, development loans, lines of credit where appropriate, so that they're able to not only continue their capacity and grow, but it being about a partnership effort, because what we've heard through our coalition is some might have land but not have the financing, some might have financing but not the land. And so working together to try to make sure that we're answering this for our partners. The other part, of course, is housing preservation, which is an ongoing commitment with the city. And they put so much into preserving affordability for those who are already in the city. We see that as opportunity as well under this neighborhood strategy. Any questions? It's a lot in one presentation. And I'll unbut Brian up as well to answer any questions.
I have a couple. Thank you, by the way. This is very exciting. But, but my question relates to how we make it affordable. How do we, I mean, I'm very impressed that it doesn't look affordable, and I'm interested in how we're doing that. Are we doing that by smaller unit sizes, different finishes, or is it a financing?
It's mostly on, it's, thank you, Councilmember Stahl, it's mostly a combination of factors, but a lot of it has to do with how we finance it. And having lower-cost capital, sometimes subsidized capital, free capital, free land. So, you know, the fact that we have had land donated by the city adjacent to Unity Park is one way we are able to support units down to that 50% AMI level. And, and then, like I, we haven't said this, I don't think, but I like to remind folks that when we reach a certain level, we're also increasing supply, at the Councilmember Fleming's point, we're increasing supply that's high-quality, that will accept a voucher. And when we see the demand for rental housing vouchers in this community, and we know how hard it is to use them because the market rents are so high, this supply strategy is critical. And your donated land is one key ingredient to the success of making this a reality.
And the second part of the question is, with the use of Lytech, are you nervous about the availability of Lytech funds?
Well, now, that's a landmine I wasn't expecting. Look, the low-income housing tax credit program at the federal level has huge, strong, and historic bipartisan support because everybody knows how successful it's been. And in the state of South Carolina, not only in this community of Greenville, but across our state, housing affordability, I mean, you talk about the urgent moment of now. We are in an urgent moment for affordable housing, and I believe that our friends in the legislature and our friends in the, at the state level, including at SC Housing, understand the urgent moment we are in, and we are working with them and will continue to partner with them to be as successful as possible.
Good answer.
Just to add, recently, I know the Association of Realtors has done some studies and gotten feedback, surveys, and housing affordability is a very top concern, actually, among a large part of the state legislature. And so it's a rising concern and an investment that they see as long-term economic mobility, and it's better for our state. So there's a lot of support with that, but also, you know, it comes to the process of scoring. Greenville County is still one of the priority areas because we have some of the most cost-burden renters in the state. And so with that being said, we are going to have also more amenities nearby to folks as well, just because the walkability and the design are a great city. So all these things together make it pretty competitive, and we hope to work and advocate in increasing that cap over time as well.
Perfect. And I also think we need to thank Jimmy Stroud for starting all this.
Yeah, I was going to recognize Jenny. I'm also, Jenny, nice to you to be here. And we've had a lot of activity lately on many, many fronts, in particular, a wonderful farewell or retirement party for Reverend Vardre Fleming recently. And it was a nice reminder, Councilman Fleming was there to look at, focused on the year 2003, and so it was 2003. We took a very broken neighborhood with a lot of vacant lots and hollowed-out houses and all, and turned it into the hundreds and hundreds of new affordable houses that are there today, and that was your, your big master plan in 2003, which was realized, and that's something that doesn't get enough note from people, but that's a huge heavy lift, and it's a good model for us now. When people say, oh, you can't do this, kind of think, oh, we've done this before. Other cities haven't, but we have, and I'm glad Jenny got to be here to, here as a reminder of everybody of that.
Any other, any other questions?
Question from Councilman Dow.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Brian, great to hear your voice. I'm really sorry I can't be there with you tonight. It's, it's really good to have you back in Greenville, and thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions that should be sort of pretty easy ones, I think. On, on the first site you covered, that has an age restriction on it, is that the same as Renaissance Place 55 and up as the age restriction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then who, so I think about Renaissance Place as a recent, very successful model opening up, and at that one, I believe NHE was the property manager.
And developer.
And developer, you know, took the applications, the, the units filled very, very quickly. On the sites that you've discussed tonight, with each, is each one of those property developers responsible for that same role? Greystone, Mr. Bretto, Mr. Jordan, Lighthouse, and so on, is it the same model for how we get the pipeline of people applying, qualifying, and in?
Yeah, great question, actually. Yes, all of our assets under development will be professionally managed, and in the example you cited with Renaissance Place, NHE happens to be not only the developer, but they're also the property manager, and we will have a very similar construct with professional management. You have to have expertise in the low-income housing tax credit space to do this well, and particularly in the, the initial lease-up, but we will have, we will have that in place at all of the developments under, that you've seen here tonight.
Okay, and then is there, and you may not be in a position to speak towards this, but on any of these that seem to be moving, you know, further ahead, or I'm sorry, that are the latter ones, are you still looking at any models where the Greenville Housing Fund has an equity share in it to, to, you know, perpetuate your partnership on it?
Absolutely. In all the examples that I've shared tonight, we do have an equity ownership position in all of them.
Okay, great. All right, do you, this is my last question, of the Unity Park sites, recognizing there were more tonight than the ones you went into detail on, are there any models that you're looking at for either homeownership, recognizing how tough that is? Good to hear Monroe Free of Habitat is there. I'm sure there are others there tonight, but are there any that you're looking at for homeownership parcels? Or is there any consideration of a rent-to-own in some of the, the spaces that you're working in, specifically at the Unity Park sites?
Great question, Dorothy. We have a few examples under affordable homeownership. So there is a shared equity model, which is very similar to what Habitat currently operates, and we also, one of the partners we brought together with this round table was Sterling Land Trust. And so working with them to help get their land trust off the ground in terms of affordable rental that they want to see in Sterling. The other part of this is us also looking at land trust options as well. And those can be, those vary on type, but you can have a few different variations. You can have a lease to own, and that could be, you know, owning the land underneath, or another possibility are some preservation that helps folks age in place over time. They would basically deed their house over to the land trust, which would be the housing fund, and then at that point, we are taking care, we are making repairs for that person while they age in place safely, and then that would still remain affordable once the transfer occurs. So that's just another type of preservation. I'm really glad you asked that question.
And that's something you, Tina, you and I have talked about separately. So with that particular model, again, I'm looking, I'm speaking just towards the Unity Park area and the Southern Side community. Are y'all working, keeping open mind to, to providing a pathway to homeownership, either through rent-to-own or partnering with a Habitat-type model, or the trust mechanism that we've talked about, you know, in that community? Is that something that y'all are looking at?
Yes, in, in Southern Side specifically, yes. And also adjacent to Southern Side, I think Tina recognized Stacy Mills and Parish House, a community development corporation, and the master planning they're doing in the Newtown neighborhood. We, we definitely want to be in a position to support the robust diversity of housing typology that's included in that master plan, which has rental and homeownership in it. And so, you know, just want to leave you all with, in these neighborhoods proximate to downtown Greenville, you know, we are looking forward to working with the staff team on how can we accelerate the investment potential in a robust land bank strategy so we can preserve affordable opportunities in these rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods while we're delivering in all these developments that you've seen tonight in our pipeline. We have a robust multifamily strategy, but we want to also include this neighborhood-based strategy that will include the affordable homeownership opportunities you're asking about.
Okay, great. And I just, one last thing to point out, on the Riley at Overbrook, you know, that's been, that's been a project where there's been a lot of community discussion on it, and I do think that staff and council did a great thing in, in moving forward that Lounce Hill sidewalk to help provide better mobility in that area, bringing the Riley at Overbrook online. So really appreciate council's support on that, and I know staff's working hard to, to provide that sidewalk to help with the concerns about traffic that, that are inevitably impacted by Riley at Overbrook. That's a great project as well. Thanks, great to see you, Ryan.
Thank you for mentioning the sidewalk investment, because again, that's an example- Thank you for mentioning the sidewalk investment, because again, that's an example of local investment leveraging the tax credit development that will support this really deep targeted affordability at the Riley while still delivering a, a high aesthetic, very nice-looking property on that, at that location. So thank, and I want to thank council for its support of the, of the public infrastructure that's much needed along Lounes Hill. So thank you, thank you, Dorothy, so much for that.
Mayor White, can we have all of the people who are either on the, the GHF Housing Board or the other partners that are here, could we have them please stand?
If your members of our coalition as well.
Yeah. They did not come alone.
Well, also, Lily, in the same vein, I think we need to recognize Monroe Free, and congratulate you on the 400th house.
Not only that, what the project that he's doing in Nickel Town, unbelievable. It's just going to be just, it's just another, another thing that we need to look for. Thank you, Monroe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Robust presentation. All right. We have anything else, Mr. Manager, that we're?
Zing session.
I mean, we still have time for it. I don't know what it is. All right.
Yes, Mayor, you've got one item to discuss. It's employment matter falls, falls under subsection 30-4-70A1 for scheduling unclassified performance reviews.
Who should go into the executive session?
I'll say it. All right, say I. Okay, thank you. And thank you again, Housing Fund.